All right, if you would, all rise. I don't believe Olivia has made it here yet or was going to lead us in prayer tonight, is that right? But we'll make, unless you're not in there in the hallway, who you not in the hallway?
Olivia.
Okay, all right. So, in her absence, Mr. Mark Baker Esquire is going to lead us in prayer. And then we've got a Mayor's Youth Council member that's going to lead us in the pledge.
Okay, good. Let's pray. Father God, thank you so much for this day and thank you for all our blessings, Father. We pray for these leaders here tonight. We pray that your hand will be on them and that you give them discernment, Father. Father, we pray for our leaders of the state and our country, Father, and we just pray that you'll be with them in the things that they do. Father, I pray for this time and I pray that you have your hand on this country, Father, as we go through these difficult times, Father. And I just pray that there'll be unity, there'll be a listening, Father, that people will have patience with one another and show more love, Father. Father, I pray that you'll bring our servicemen and women home safely. I pray all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please stand and face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. I had someone ask earlier if there was a sign-in sheet for public comment. We do that for public comment in general and other stuff, but for public hearings, there is no sign-in. Mr. Baker makes a record of that as people come up and speak. So, I don't know of anyone here that's here tonight, no one called the office to make public comment. So, we'd like to move on to the agenda on their own business. I'm sorry, thank you. So, we're missing a board member who caught me last year. I didn't know there was any such thing as fall break. But fall break is another national holiday like spring break is. So, now we have.
Harry Williams is on.
Harry Williams is attending by phone. Can you hear us, Harry? Harry, can you hear us? Can you hear?
Yeah, I hear you.
All right. All right, under own business, approve the special call board meeting minutes of September 18th. Approve the special call board meeting minutes of September 18th, 2025, and September 23rd, 2025, and the regular board meeting minutes of September 15th, 2025. Motion by me, Sharon Womack. Second, Mr. Jerry Crane, any comment on any of that? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Harry, I got it. All right, for members of the audience that haven't been in a board meeting lately here, I tend to embed, trying to be sensitive to board members that work and sometimes have a hard time getting away from work, getting here on time. So, I embed a work session, type information in inside the agenda, and that's what I'm about to do. I'll move down and begin that right now. All right, good evening, board, thank you for being here. Okay. Board, you were kind enough to let me attend a christening of the Louis H. Wilson in Bath, Maine. It is beginning to shape up that we will have his daughter here for Veterans Day for a program here. I want to say I was very humbled by the attendance there and the reception, even though it rained the first three days. But it really turned off very nice. Bath is a, you know, 1800-type city, supposedly a recreation of the first schooner ever made in Maine. Bath Iron Works is somewhat of a sister to Ingalls, they build ships. This was a very special occasion and very well attended by the governor, U.S. senators, and many admirals. The Commandant of the Marines gave a nice address, many good things like that, I can't speak highly enough of it. For those in the audience that don't know, Mr. General Louis Wilson was born in Brandon, raised in Brandon. His father passed away when he was five years old, got a street highway named after him. Very admirable, and many things are given to him in his name. He is really accredited with many Marines, I don't know, there may be a Marine in the audience, with saving the United States Marine. He took them all the way through, became Commandant of the Marines, and very honored to be there for him and his family, his daughter. He's only got one child, she did an outstanding job, that's her on the right, and that's them. And if you look at the last sentence there, father was Louis and mother was Jane, and that's how they named her Janet. They put a T, and Louise, they put an E at the end of it. Hope to have her here, her husband, Jerry, as well. They live in Birmingham, and they have a lot of stories they want to share with us, and perhaps you will be here. Do you remember it, did you? I need to get, did you hear from anybody today about that? Okay, so we're going to be soliciting people, Marcus, that still live in Brandon and are around, to be able to attend a function that we hope to have them at, entertain them here, be a nice thing. So, well attended. I met a few people that were local, and they sent me by another Medal of Honor winner, Colonel, they called him Barney, but it wasn't Barney, Barnum. And that was his Medal of Honor that he gave me. The young man you see standing on my left there was actually from City of Jackson. His mother still lives in Madison County, she's trying to buy a house over here. That is Janet's husband, Jerry, on my right in that picture. Again, an outstanding job, all the way through from the sponsorship dinner to the very end. So, I was very humbled by it. Two billion dollar investment to something that's going to last between 30 to 40 years. It's going to be interesting to see where it is first deployed to. I did take that picture with my cellphone, and this is some of the stuff you get into if you're a nerdy guy like me. 3,000 light fixtures, 33 miles of pipe, 3,500 long tons of steel. And that thing was built front to back within one-eighth of an inch of its designed length. So, there is a top right corner of this, I was speaking with an admirable, Admiral, and he said that if you put two ships made, one in Ingalls and one in Bath, you put them side by side, didn't tell anybody, he could walk through and tell you which one was built in Bath. It's not, he's not dissing Ingalls or any other shop, but he could just tell by the quality of wells and the workmanship that if it's Bath-built, it's best-built, and that whole community, a community of 8,000 people, they live to that. And very interesting, a lot of nice people there. So, that's what it looked like when they popped champagne on it. And I'd like, on the agenda tonight, I'm going to be asking to put a full-page ad in Rankin County News, and Marcus, you'll have to help me write it, but we'll get it, and I've got a lot of good pictures like that. I think it'd be, we need to do that and drive that, that'll help us advertise hopefully them coming. And I can just tell you, she is a very educated lady, she got a degree from Auburn. She went to Alabama and became a Juris Doctorate and speaks very well, even though she was emotional. She did chain it together and did an absolutely wonderful job. She can tell her own stories of General Louis when he grew up here and some of the things that he was fond of, and got some pictures you're just not going to believe until you see them. Today, attended a brief funeral over here. This gentleman was found and taken to Newton and interned there. But let us not forget all of those who served. So, he was recently returned to the U.S., was lost in Italy, and was just recently identified and brought home. Strikes, and we attended, our police department did exactly what they're supposed to do. For me, that strikes a chord because I've got two great uncles, one in Europe somewhere and one in the bottom of the sea in the Pacific somewhere that we don't have any record of. So, it's good that these are found and brought home. All of his brothers and sisters are passed, but he had nieces and nephews here in Brandon today. Police report, board, just to give you some numbers, cause of service, arrest and that type of thing. So, we're going to go through these and we'll work on this. I'm still not quite satisfied with ease of bringing them in, but I about reconcile myself. It's going to be easier for me to bring these into a work session, into a PowerPoint than it is embed them in a Word document, and I can make copies of these if you'd like them. So, I'm going to start bringing these monthly things in from our four big departments here. There's fire. You know, I do have a little bit of a concern there, just on Pafford. Seems like we're inching on up there to 10 and 11 minutes, and I know we were eight minutes and nine minutes for a long time. So, I'd like to just put a feeler on that, please, and let's see what's going on, make sure we don't have any problems. Still got a problem with two weather sirens. You pick up little things when you go to places like Bath, and this is how they painted their hydrants. So, I think the only place in Mississippi that has yellow fire hydrants is on the coast. I think Biloxi Gufford do that, but this was also a good idea. For those of you who don't know, red, green, and blue mean something, and they mean what, Chief? Test, so that's a test. So, that might be something we could do with others, might do steamer caps or something rather than painting the whole hydrant or something like that. We paint ours white. By the way, Chief, there was no speed limit over 35 miles an hour in Bath. It was 25 and 35, that was it, maximum speed limit. So, public works, you see what they're doing here. If you squint at that, I'll leave this one on there for just a second. Number of sewer and those grinder pumps still drive us crazy, drainage issues, and number of work orders completed, 144. So, we're getting to that, glad to see that. Audience, we try to give the board feedback as to efficiency of the four big departments once a month. This is the core and main report, minor leaks, 508, and you see coming down. And, you know, there is an occasion out of 11,000 meters where one will go berserk sometime and be wrong, or someone will damage it, or somebody a monkey with it. And I think do a pretty good job of policing this, very glad that they're with us. And it's all-time stuff like this. So, I had a neighbor that took the picture on the left at daylight when he was going to work, and he said, he'd be able to give you a heads up. And they got right on it, it was just a gasket that blew out. But every gallon of water we can save, we need to save. Now, board and, not necessarily Joey, but Alex, this is, I've been tracking our water wells since all the data I could find. And, board, this is a big, long spreadsheet. I had to blow it up and squeeze it down to try to get it in here. But I've got every record of every water well that we've put in. The one on the far left of what you're looking at was the North Street Well. I believe it was 400 and something thousand that put that in. All the way over on the right is the one that we're putting in, bringing online hopefully in the month of October. That is 3.3 million and some change, to give you an idea of how much that changes over time. I want to begin, Alex, testing our water wells, late spring, early summer. We need to do that before we get into budgeting every year. Board, the reason why I started doing this was to anticipate and project which wells were going to be giving us problems to begin with. And that happened really twice. I caught the Overby Tank, and I'll show you that right here. I caught the Overby Tank, and I knew that it had a problem. Well, sure enough, it had big problems, so we wound up rebuilding it, putting a bigger motor on it, getting more water out of it than what its original design was. Same thing happened on the Kane Circle Tank, that shaft broke on it, we rehabbed it. We also rehabbed, and Jeremy, you weren't, you weren't here, David, Sharon, and Jared, I don't know if y'all remember this, but we had a problem with a chamber well, and it was down. And because our water capacity was so strong, the system, our water system didn't even know it was down because it took somewhere around 14, 15, 16 months to get all the things we needed to fix that well. So, I'm projecting the next one that we have a problem with is the Highway 468 well. So, you see it's only operating, or last time it was tested, at 62% of its capacity, what its original capacity was. That's just a little warning sign, something's up with it, and we need to get to work and double-check that. Go flow-test it first, Alex. Community development, you see where their violations are by ward. The number one thing is parking, overgrown grass, and most of the two things. We're still working on looking for employees, for code enforcement people. We're hiring, anybody out in the world looking for a job, we're hiring good, qualified people that don't mind going to work. So, we want to rebuild an audience. This is kind of what some of this moratorium stuff is about, we're trying to rebuild community development, the whole department. And I'm about to speak some more of that in just a minute. For the year, this is a good snapshot, and I'm going to give you the same thing on sales tax here in just a second. But this is a culmination of the year, since our year, for those in the audience, begins October 1, our fiscal year, and goes to September 30. So, for residential, we had 26 million total valuation, constructed 65 homes in Brandon. Commercial, we had 8 and 45 million. These are just good numbers to track year over year. I showed the audience, the board this last time, to kind of show you what's going on in Brandon. If you don't live here, you're really not sensitive to it. Lou was on the board in 1999, but you can see how our general fund and enterprise fund has grown over the years, and we're not a little bitty town anymore. I still, I know some of us don't like that, but we are, I found out that a lot of people want to move here because they want the same quality of life that we have here, but we're not a little bitty town anymore. Put that in, you've got a spreadsheet I left in front of you like that, laying in front of you. That's Mr. Earl Dean Rhodes, bills that every year. The key thing to show there is where we are, where municipalities fall and what we're generating as opposed to the county as a whole. Now, he's very proud of the fact that Rankin County is the fourth county in the state. Number one is DeSoto County, number two is Harrison County, number three is Jackson County, and then number four is Rankin County. So, we're doing the right things and growing the right ways, and this is evidence of that. Some other things you want to see on here are mobile homes, and they depreciate rather than appreciate. And you look at the cities as to how much, how many mobile homes are in each city. Another thing I'd like you to look at is the special HS valuation over 65. And you see in Brandon, that is the number of retired people that we have living in Brandon. So, as opposed to our other sister cities in Rankin County, we have a lot more retired people living here. And, you know, that first 75,000 of the value of the home is written off, so they don't have, we don't have to pay taxes on that. Want to give you an update on sales tax, the 2% tax, tourism tax, and the hotel tax, a couple of observations here. So, does everybody in the room that keeps up with the news knows that the legislature changed the laws and reduced tax on groceries? And we're trying to do away with, and when I say we, I guess we're the whole state of Mississippi, trying to do away with income tax across the state. Well, that's, that's great, there's nothing wrong with that, having that. I can tell you that a lot of municipalities around the state are, opened their eyes, and we all listened to the legislature when they said, if there's a negative that comes out on municipalities, we're going to make you whole. Over and over and over ship. The leadership of the House, the leadership of the Senate, everybody said the same thing. If this hurts y'all, we're going to make you whole. The problem with that is, for me, I never got, how are you going to do that? How are you going to quantify it, how are you going to calculate it, and how are you going to make us whole? I don't understand that. So, for me, looking at this, this is the first time, I've got audits from 1999 forward to now. It's the first time we've gone backwards in sales tax. So, we had a negative, that bottom-left corner, 122,000, something like that? 123,962, first time we've ever had a negative. So, makes me want to go, hmm. Other side of that, if you go up to, where is that? To June, which was collected in April, whatever was going on in the city, city pays sales tax. Businesses pay sales tax two months, state takes it for a month, and they give it back out to us. That's the first time we've ever been over 800,000 in one month. So, just interesting to look at, interesting to study and watch the trend lines. Our tourism tax has never gone down. So, I'm going to show you why these things, these conversations I'm having with you are important. So, it's always gone up, it went up 162, 715 year over year. Great, that's good. Hotels, another surprise, since the Hilton flag came up, the old La Quinta Inn is now a spark with a Hilton flag. I know my niece and her family stay there when they come up for ball games. They were here this weekend for downtown, and that's good. If you look down at the numbers from June, July, August, and September, you can see increases. In other words, July was collected in, what, two months before that in May, $9,000. So, you can look back down to October last year, and you can see 2,000. So, you know, obviously, it, those things are helping us as these other hotels come online. So, we're going to see to continue that, that will grow. Comparing these three, if you look at, from Tracy's doing a great job, and we look at what we collected in year past, and that's how we set the budget going forward. I've had this conversation with you in the past. Well, if you look down at the very bottom down here, you see yearly based on average was 8.4, and we budgeted 8.5. So, we're $100,000 off of what we projected last year when we set the budget in sales tax. We're off $100,000. Fortunately, we made up for that in 2% and 3%, because you can add those and we're significantly above that. So, it makes me suspicious of what monkeying with the state's sales tax on groceries is going to do to the city of Brandon. And we need to be cognizant and aware of that every month. Had the opportunity to go representing MML, representing Brandon to Louisville. This was a picture of the tornado, April 28, 2014. I remember that date because it's my sister's birthday, one of my younger sisters. And someone was at Lake Tiaqata and took that picture of that storm. It's the same storm that came through Brandon. There was one fatality in Rankin County, there were 10 in Louisville. And it's kind of occurred to us, mayors, it's kind of occurred to us after Rollingford, we've begun somewhat of a municipal task force, because it's great what the state has done, broken the state up into regions and this kind of thing. I remember Brian was in contact with me on cellphone when he hit the ground in Rollingford. I believe Brandon had the first people on the ground there, ready to go, and what they found was total darkness. And I said, well, see, you learn as you go. I said, well, you should have brought a light plant, you know, we learn as we go, right? So, that was bad one in Rollingford because it actually put a water tower on the ground. But we've got to start generating some support among our municipal brothers and sisters and start taking care of cities. We can't expect the state to do it as expediently as they can. They've got some other resources around the state, but we're going to start, try to begin a network of taking care of sister cities. I know when the tornado that came through Brandon before that one in 2024, when it came through Brandon, it actually came through East Haven, went up and over my house, took off the house upstairs of the holders, which by the way, have been married 72 years now. But it took the top floor off and it skipped over my house. Glad to see that. First person I saw in my front yard was a Pearl police officer. So, none of us have all the resources we need, we've all got to depend on each other. So, that's what we did in Lewisville, and that's a bunch of mayors, Amory, Lewisville, Rollingford. Anyway, Hattiesburg. Board, you might have seen this or heard about this Municipal Intercept Program. We did this two years ago, but nobody followed up internally. So, it's already had board action. Tracy Marion ran into the ground, it's just we've been, we were in between city clerks and nobody followed up. What that says is that if there's a fine out there, somebody against Water Department, somebody against Police Department, Fire Department, whatever, and they get an income tax check back, that we get that, whatever we're due out of that, and they get the rest of it. So, I think it's important that we jump all over this since income tax looks like it's going to start going away. So, that's what that is, Municipal Intercept Company. Progress inside the Civic Center. Got one question for you, you may want to go in there and look, did core samples, it's going up. That welder on the right welded in that one spot for seven hours, it's coming right along. You see the stage in the background, these are some pictures going in. That I-beam that's up top, I'm going back and forth with Jamie Ware right now about whether we should paint that big beast up there. There are two of those, and we're taking posts out in the middle of this room, folks. Need to have it done by November 1 because we've got a sold-out concert in there at that time, and then we've got the Veterans Day on November the 11. Sullivan's, if you hadn't been out to Sullivan's, this is a slab, it's a huge slab going up. I'm going to give you progress on this. So, the steel is already going up, they're putting lime in the ground in there, treating it before they cover it. I want to say that the Thrash Project beside us here and the Home to Suites down by Applebee's, they say you could look for steel going up in the next two weeks here beside us and probably three weeks out on the home too. They hadn't even gotten to their concrete pad yet, things are moving right along. All right, Byron, you want to step up here for a minute? And you can drive this thing, you can talk all you want. So, like to introduce Byron Burkalter. He's on the right here, so he's with Park Apartments, and go ahead, sir, introduce yourself.
All right, I'm Byron Burkalter with Park Development Group. We're based in Madison, Mississippi. We've been working with Ergon as the master developer on the Sullivan's marketplace. And as you can see here, this is for the multifamily laws. So, really, this is just to give you an update on where we are. I think we came here about a year ago and re-zoned the property to multifamily. And so, we've made a lot of progress since then. We've gotten civil drawings, architectural drawings, hardscape designers, interior designers, environmental approvals, and so, we're getting really close to being ready to get started. Now, we've, we've sent the plans to Joey and his team to start reviewing, and so, the goal is to get on the agenda in the next couple of weeks for a site plan approval. So, this is really just to give you a quick background on the property and the progress that we've, we've been going through. So, this is one of our renderings, and so, as you see here, it's 204 units. This is the property kind of right on the other side of the creek of Sullivan's. So, as you drive in, you've got a really nice clubhouse, about 6,500 feet. Right behind that, you've got the pool area and a lot of amenity space. And I'll just keep going through these pictures and feel free to stop me if you, if I can zoom in here. So, this is the site plan that we've submitted to Joey. As you can see, we've got a walking track around the entire property, right here in the middle. We've got our clubhouse. Right below that, you've got our swimming pool with a sun shelf on the north and the south side. I'll kind of go, I've got some more pictures that kind of dive into this a little, in more detail. You've got the activity lawn here, you've got pickleball courts right here on the west side of the property. Up here, we've got a sitting area with a swing. Down here, we've got a walkway to a fireplace pit down here in the middle, and then another area down here with a pergola, and then a dog park on the southeast portion of the site. Here's another look from the renderings. See if I can get a little deeper here. So, this is one of the, so we got hardscape drawings, which is about 15 pages, this is just one excerpt of it. It's kind of hard to, hard to zoom in here, but on the dog park, we've got three grilling areas right here with tables and seating, and then a dog spa here on the north side. And then from the, the pool area, so on the, kind of the southern portion of this, of the community center, we've got a really nice fitness center and yoga room. In the yoga room, we've got, you know, kettlebells, pelotons, medicine balls, things like that, that's overlooking the pool. We've got a sauna and cold plunge that's right on here. And we've got astroturf around here with different bocce ball and cornhole. And so, it's going to be a great, a lot of amenities for the tenants on this site plan. Let's see, here's another look at the pool. So, you can see here, we've got concrete pavers around the pool, we've got two cabanas, we've got a pergola, we'll have TVs and a grill. We've got, we'll have cornhole and bocce ball setup, and this will be turfed area. And then we've got a sauna and cold plunge on the north side of the pool with the fitness overlooking the pool. So, we're, we're really excited about this design that we've, we've got. Here's just, we've got a 15-page landscaping plan. This is just an excerpt of, of the pool area and the clubhouse. I won't get into too much detail, but we've got really good landscaping. Here's another look on the exterior of the buildings. Here's another look on the exterior of the buildings. Our interior designer is out of Birmingham and so we've been working with them. We're finalizing our, we're driving over to Birmingham in the, in a few weeks to finalize our designs, but this is just a, the board that we've been coming up with as of today. Let's see if I can. There we go. So this is for the clubhouse and you can just see we've got different flooring and lighting, different hardware for the lacing areas, the offices, restrooms. And so we've got a certain area, a certain design for the pet spa, the fitness center. And so that, that's just a, I think that's the last page. There we go. So cost of the project, so we've, we've bid out the project, all the subcontractors. It's been about a fifty million dollar project. The, the rents are going to be around two thousand a month. And so we've got, we're planning on starting right now around March. And so we've got a little bit, little bit of time, but we're, we're trying to get everything wrapped up to start by March. One reason is just the, the time of the year. We don't want to start in December and then it'd just be super wet and us just be trudging through the dirt. And so we feel like March is, is going to be a good time and it's going to take about probably twenty months to build the project. So hopefully start by March, March fifteenth, March first, about twenty months to complete. And just in terms of our sources and uses, so it's about fifty million dollar development. And I've had a few questions recently of, of people that have asked me, you know, is it a, is a HUD project? What kind of project is it? It is not, we're using a HUD two twenty-one D four loan. It is not a section eight or section forty-two. It's not a low income property. It's going to be a very high end class A property that is going to get very good rent. It's going to have very good tenants in it. And so we're really excited to bring this to Brandon and we've put a ton of time and effort and money into it so far. And so we're excited to bring this to Brandon. Think it's going to be really good for Sullivan's and just that whole area to get developed out. So happy to answer any questions anyone has.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, number two on the agenda. I tried to tag these with the agenda. I don't know if I'll always be able to do that. Consideration to establish, I'm going to be asking you to vote on that tonight. And over here on the wall is a hard copy of that. This is an improvement for downtown. M dot's been beat up and beat up and beat up about all the time they spent doing that. And I've got some of these I'm going to zoom in on, but all this is evaluating property lines, utilities from A to Z. So audience visiting with the commissioner told the board recently that he's very honest about it and he actually recommends going forward like this, that it's not even on the three-year plan yet. So recently the legislature voted to give him, give them, M dot more money out of sales tax on gasoline, on fuel. But until that money begins to fall into the coffers, they're still at a standstill. So at best, you're looking at four or five years before they would even talk to us about Highway eighty. That's the difference between local pub, that's what L P A stands for, local public agencies, that's us. City of Brandon has had history in this before. If you like, I know you live on Highway eighty east and that was the improvement that was done there. Those two signals at Lewis Wilson and Tricklebridge Road, those were MPOs. So that's how that project was built. It was an L P A. Tried to zero in a little bit more on some of these intersections. So that is Highway eighty and four sixty-eight or College Street. And they have completed phase A of their assessment. They're up working on phase B and are willing to complete phase B before they turn it over to us to begin whatever work we need to do. So it's very interesting to look at that and look at the detailed analysis that's been done at all these places. There's one, this is, let's see here, this is four seventy-one and Overby. And if you look at that, you see where they'll be taking out a lot of things. For instance, the parking lot to the old laser off supply will be gone. They'll be putting a sweeping turn lane in there that goes to the right. There'll be a sweeping turn lane that comes off of Highway eighty east that goes north on four seventy-one and those type of things. So I've got that and I'll be glad to share it with you, anything and everything. So all the way down the hill to just about the interstate and you look at the detail of where they've captured all that data. Uh-oh, this ain't good. All right. See how fast. I'm sorry. They're on the agenda. They're following the agenda. Right down the line. What do you mean all in one? Yeah, I, I think there might be conversation, you know? I'll wait to hear from the board on that, you know? They may want to say pull out two or three or want to talk about that separately, you know? It's going to be up to the board. All right, two, let's get down to three here. So that's establishing that. Number three on the agenda is Jonathan Kaiser, Kaiser Traffic Engineering. I think he's here just in case somebody want to ask a question. He's going to be doing a holistic thing. You've got that study in front of you, but we specifically talked about a roundabout at College Street and four sixty-eight. And I went over to the airport at that one and kind of drew that circle. Then I went back to four sixty-eight and drew that one there. So that's about how much space you're going to need, just generate playing around. So you got any other specific transportation things? Jonathan's here to say, are you going to look at this? And he is, he's going to get up sixty thousand square feet and look down at us, right? Okay. All right. Might hang around a little while just in case. Planning commission, board, I know William's here somewhere tonight and he and I were on the planning commission in two thousand and one and a lot's happened since two thousand and one. Our population's doubled and Brandon's growing. And I would like to recommend to you that we go from five to seven. Each board member nominate one, that would be six, and I'll nominate one, then they elect their own chairman. And that's kind of the thrust of it. That way you get four there for consensus and you can have action. And I believe now's the time to do that since we're rebuilding community development. Really, it's just three changes in there and we can get to this later, Mark. Other one is if they miss two meetings instead of three, that they're automatically come off and we find somebody else to go on. And I'd like to change what they're being compensated to a hundred dollars for each meeting, not to exceed three hundred in aggregate for a month. I've always told everybody, every community development director, you can have a special call meeting in a heartbeat. You don't have to wait once a month, which slows down things for the business community. Have one a week as far as the board's concerned, I'm telling you. I'm concerned. All right. Test wells in Matthew, yeah, Matthew's hiding in the back of the room. Consideration of test wells for future well locations. I'm going to map these out, but number one is a little bit different than the rest of them. So these are spots, and I have, actually have a couple more that I'd like to do test wells on to see if they're viable locations for water wells. Years ago, did one at Shallow Park and it turned out to be a quote unquote dry well. There wasn't enough water down there to come up through that sand strata to supply a well. One of the, well, I'll just go down the list here. Star Brandon Road is number one. On the agenda tonight is to move forward with an S R F loan, which to put in a water well at that. We bought two lots there when we bought that fire station lot. So there's plenty of room there. Chief believes there's enough room to the side, to the south of that station, Matthew, to put that well there. We'll look at that and see where that property lines at, but if not, we've got two acres behind it. Quarry Park at Windsor Lake, we already own that as city property, part of Quarry Park. Metropolitan Lane is up in industrial park. Number four Shelby Circle is actually on sixth, unleased sixteen section ground at the very end of that. I'd like to look at that because of the elevation at that one particular place. You've got good height there for a water tower. Poindexter Street, when we came along, we lost a well somewhere in there and don't know exactly how long ago that was, but I think that is a viable site to go down Matthew with a deeper well there rather than a shallow well. I'm sure it's just as deep as the pig well behind the grocery store. And that would be a good opportunity to go down to a deep well there and have two wells pretty close to each other. And Shallow Park Baseball, there's already three phases run down there by a small ball, which used to be a lift station. So that's a viable place as well. So if we discover that these are good wells, we can just plot them out and go in. This is the fire station on Star Brandon Road. Fire station sits on two point four acres and we own the two acres behind that. So we've got plenty of room there to do a, a water well, water well, water tower. So we're looking at going down Star Brandon Road with water. That'll work well there. I think he mentioned putting a twelve inch main on the highway, on Highway eighteen to come back up to four sixty-eight there as well as part of that project. On your agenda tonight is Wildlife Mississippi Price Quote on buying wetland credits. This is for the sewer line that runs from the big square you see, which was pine trees, which is coming down, which is where the data centers are going to go. We have a grant there, two point four, two point eight million dollars to put a sewer line in and we need to buy wetland credits for that. So I appreciate you approving that. Need to get to work on that. We've got a consideration to pay for the work going on in the civic center. Stage is coming out, audience, these acts like another four to six feet, so we're building that. And I'd like your determination of whether or not we need to paint that or not. So we're looking at that. Recently had opportunity to go to Tupelo and visited with the mayor there, learned a lot. I shared some things here that we do here that he was unaware about. But I'd like to send Joey and Chief back up there to visit with the police department and community development. They do some things that are quite different than how we handle community development, especially handling blighted property. They, they move pretty quick on it. I think there's a lot to be learned there. Their chief code enforcement officer is, carries a sidearm, he's a sworn officer. So the things that we need to think about as, as we grow and improve. So we got a lot we can learn. He was very kind, opened it up. I was allowed to sit in on one of their blighted property meetings and I've got records of all of that that I'll be sharing with Joey and how, and be coming back to you with it as well because this is going to change how we do things. Also looked at the hotel there since one of these hotels is going up beside us here. That is one that Thrash Construction built. That is their restaurant area downstairs and very nice. But police department, Cadis Bank Center, went in and visited some things in there, blight elimination program and a major thoroughfare program. The last one is the real reason I wanted to sit down and talk to them and sat down with four of them, had great conversations with their city clerk of how they do that and will be bringing those ideas to you in the future. Ten, consideration to develop bid documents for improvements to police department, fire department and our parks. So you're going to have to stomach a little bit of this because none of, nobody likes spending money. But finally got the police department paid for after the cannon being kicked down the road for five or six years. We wrote that last check year before last, hard to believe, but finally got it paid for. And it needs to be totally renovated and modified. It wasn't even when it was built, there was no such thing as a server room, just to give you an example. That's the layout. You can look down at the bottom of that and I've got a summary slide here in just a few minutes, but remember that these are opinions of probable cause, opinions of probable cause. You're going to hear me say that a dozen times over because you don't know what it is until you get bid documents. Until you can create bid documents and put it out for bid, you don't know what it's going to cost. It could be far more, it could be a lot less. You just don't know. But bid documents just don't, it's not a filing cabinet. You can go open it up and say, pull them out and do it. These are very specific and I tried this a couple of years ago and the board wasn't ready to act on that. So we need to pay somebody to develop bid documents on everything I'm about to show you, if you have inclined that you're ready to move forward with it. So just the police department is right at four million dollars as an estimate, probable cause. Fire station that was built by volunteer firefighters eons ago. I don't think there's a soul in this room that doesn't believe it needs to get rebuilt. But to what? So I've got general ideas and general plans here. I think Jamie Ware spent quite a bit of time with the fire department looking at this. That is, we went back and forth since we're getting a ladder truck. Early conversation was you needed a three bay station here to put that ladder truck in here so it'd have closer proximity to the nursing homes and the hospital. Chief now feels that not only the chief, but the fire department believes that's the wrong place to put it. Needs to be out here at Marquette. Still need to rebuild that station, but you're building a two bay station instead of a three bay station, which is fine. So you see the cost there, a guess of two point eight million. Might as well just say three. Then you got the Marquette station. I like to say that pig needs a little lipstick on it, you know? It's just, it serves and I think we just put up one or two doors, new doors. All three new doors out front, okay? You're going to like the rendering of it, but playing with the floor plan and creating something that looks like, I'm a big believer that the quality of government buildings is a statement to the quality of the community that we live in. Doesn't matter what building it is. And I think it's long overdue. So it's already a three bay station, natural for the new ladder truck to go there. And he's thinking that because of what's going on with data centers and other things. Three point four, three and a half million. Parks. So as you know, I love Google Earth. This is Boys Thompson Drive. This is, we built that, for those of you that weren't here when we were going through all this, we added two concession stands on each end of this so that grandmothers would not have to walk from the far field all the way to the main concession stand to get to a restroom with babies and that kind of thing. But we built that with a belief that one day we were going to come back and build two more fields on each end. We just tried to stay within our money here and that is the plan. So if we're going to build two more, that gives you a bank of eight, that's where they'll go. And that's how it would lay out in that particular area. Everybody that comes here says they wish they had fields like we have in Brandon. Marquette Road is kind of a lay down place now. We're transitioning, going to North Street with all that. You can generally kind of see two fields down here on the bottom left and it's because we don't have the plans to go in and put the pipe work. Now, this was an early, early thought, one, two, three, four, five, six. I don't believe there's room for six there and we've got a better drawing than that. But that's what we've, we're strapped with. So when you go out there and you see this, it's because we don't have the plans to say that's where that drainage pipe needs to go off of Marquette Road. Just need a plan to get started installing all that kind of stuff, whether you build a fields or not, at least get the fields and tell us where to put the infrastructure. So that's kind of the general plan of today. The parking lots used to support the amphitheater as well, as is the quarry baseball, but those are three hundred foot fields. You could put five, my recommendation would be four. Drop off the one closest to the railroad tracks and leave that wooded down there. Tennis, we've got, I think half a million dollars coming from Rankin first. They wanted to invest in more tennis here. You can see the three, three courts that we just got redone and the pickleball, we've got three pickleball courts down there and four old courts. Need to bring them up, change the lighting out, modernize them. And this is Chris Trubisky's thought on where nine more could go. So another restroom concession stand type facility there and nine more built in that location. Shallow Park, easy to see all that. I remember when we scanned off the first field, I remember taking down lights and all that kind of stuff. So we took care of the champ and we took care of small ball and we didn't do anything on the other, the other nine fields. So four ball and foul ball. And the question today is, is it time to take care of that and take a step in that direction? So there we go. So that would be artificial turf. Maybe when you get the plans back, you can only afford to do four, not nine. Or maybe you want to go ahead and do nine, bite the bullet. But those drainage systems off those fields are really important. All right. So Quarry Park, laying up a new splash pad, turning the old splash pad into pickleball and everything, you see every bit of that just for, that's Quarry Park, Marquette Road, baseball, city park, everything we can think of throwing at the kitchen sink right now is up there. Probable construction cost, an estimate of seventeen million. There you go. All right. So you add all that up, police department, fire department, two stations, you come up with a twenty-seven probable cause. Now, I finish up this and then I'll come up there and sit down. I like this picture because it reminds me of two things. That's twenty-four feet of excavation that we did and we did all the pre-con work ourselves. So we took a twenty million dollar estimated build and we built it for thirteen. So even though you're looking at probable cause, you do pre-con, you do all the work you can do internally yourself. It doesn't matter if it takes a year or two because you're saving tremendous amounts of money. You do the pre-con work yourself. We were able to build that for thirteen million and got her done. And got her done. All right. So now I'm fixing to walk back up there and sit down and have a little calm look. All right, Mr. Baker, now you can start for it. Go through the agenda here. Thank you, board. All right. So under the mayor, we've got 10, 11 items. I left off three for next time. All right. Board, is anybody, anything you'd like to pull out of there going down the line? One, two?
I would like to discuss several.
Okay, well, sure. You want, all right, you wanna take them one at a time?
We'll start with number two. If we take over this project and MDOT gives it to us, are we responsible for Highway 80 maintenance and upkeep from here on out?
No.
And if it doesn't work out, does it revert back to MDOT?
Yes.
And do we have an estimated cost of this?
Five years ago, it was $10 million. I'm gonna guess it's 16, 17, 18 right now. You're gonna be surprised how much the utilities cost, to relocate utilities. You know, you made a comment to me about widening North College Street to get another turn lane in there. And I did go look at it, and you can look on that map, and I'll be glad to get you a copy of it or a link to that. And you can see the telephone, the telephone poles have power lines on it, you've got to move all that to be able to get that width and do that turn lane. So it's complicated. It's not easy, and it's gonna be expensive.
Have we taken on a project this magnitude before?
Not an MDOT project.
Does the city, we have to upfront a lot of this cost with the hopes of being reimbursed down the line?
No, you'd be reaching out and getting state dollars and federal dollars. For instance, there's two signals here in those intersections, you know? We've been making applications to MPO to take care of those. So you're gonna be reaching out legislatively to get money. So it gives you the opportunity to do that. Without that, then you're just gonna sit back and wait on MDOT.
You're convinced we have the capability to do this?
I think we get the right engineer working for us, and we begin to, for lack of a better word, you do kind of play politics, but you've got to go make a statement to our state leaders and our federal leaders, many of which are about to be running for office, you know, that we need help. And it's not unlike, how you think, to give you a good example, how do you think Highway 25 and Flowood got built? Same thing. You know, that was the internal politics. So.
It doesn't obligate you.
It doesn't obligate, you're not obligated to do anything, you know? It's to try to begin that. So you do the work you do as you get the funding to do it. That make sense?
You're gonna have to help me with that. I don't.
All right. So let's say you were able to secure $5 million out of the legislature this year, then you've got that $5 million to work toward this. That might be some utility relocation, that might be some right-of-way acquisition, or those types of things, until you can reach a point where you can, the county may participate a little bit, who knows? So it's like you're climbing a ladder.
How can you estimate the opinion of how long it might take to complete this project once we start it? How do you?
Well, you're not.
I'm showing a lack of confidence, you know? And I hate to do that, because I know it's needed, but I don't.
Well, it's not the city do, okay. It's not the city doing it. I'm, I hear you loud and clear. It's not like we're gonna have public works out there doing anything. There are all gonna be bid documents, they're all gonna be worked on, it's all gonna be right down the line. If the board is comfortable with waiting five years or longer to get MDOT to take action, then that's just what we'll have to do. If you're dissatisfied with that and you wanna try to accelerate that a little bit, then we need to take action.
Well, there's so much we've looked at tonight. Is this one a priority over others? I mean, how do we distinguish?
The number of complaints I get, the number of complaints I get about traffic in downtown, this is a priority for me.
And I go back to my question. Do we know this will solve traffic issues in downtown?
Well, I guess you know it won't. If you're not gonna add a lane of traffic to get twice as much traffic out, then obviously it's not gonna solve it. So, audience and board, it's the number one complaint I get is traffic downtown.
I understand that, but, I mean, are we going by those MDOT plans that you just showed us? I guess my question is, you won't spend 15, 20 million dollars when you jump up with this on work? That's my question.
Well, it was $67 million to put Highway 471 in. And that was two bridges, a bridge over railroad tracks and a bridge over the interstate some years ago. Did that help traffic eliminating a four-way stop at the railroad tracks and help everybody that lives north of the railroad? I'd have to say, yeah, it helped tremendously. There's tons of people that live here now that don't even remember that. I'd have to go back and say in 1991, East Metro began in South End of Brandon as a bypass around Brandon. Did that eliminate, not eliminate, did that help traffic in downtown Brandon so that people south of the county didn't have to come all the way into downtown? I'd have to say it did. Just like a bridge over the railroad tracks, that gray crossing on Highway 18, you think that's gonna help traffic? Everybody believes it is, but until it's built, how do you know?
So the.
Here's my question, if ever we've done traffic studies, determine whether or not it is. I would just, I mean, sure, it helps some. It'll help 15, 20 million dollars for us to handle. That's my question.
Well, that's the question, okay? My only response with that would be, it's not your 15 million dollars, it's not our 15 million dollars, it's gonna be money coming from the feds and the state. So, you know? So I'm fine with saying, no, we don't wanna do that as a city. But that's, y'all's call.
Is there, is there a percentage, you know, some of these things, it's like they contribute 80%, we contribute 20? Would this be totally state and federal funded, or we have to contribute some?
Yeah, I went through the story on Louis Wilson, that turned into a 4.2 million dollar job. And the state put some in, the county put some in, the city put some in, and MPO put some in to climb that ladder to get up there. But it won't do any good for me to go asking for money to give to MDOT to work on this if, you know, they're just gonna put it in the big dark hole of MDOT, so.
Yeah, so I guess I'm, I'm just, wanna ensure that we don't really know how much the city would have to put in to this project, right, as far as funding?
All right, remember probable, you don't know how much the city's gonna put in on anything until you get bid documents, you know, which is way down the road.
So this, this consideration is, I'm sorry, this consideration is just to explore this further or to?
To convert it to an LPA project.
Further exploration, more information?
So that we can go secure funding to try to get it done.
So not voting to do it, to actually do this, start it?
Well, converting it to an LPA is starting it.
Okay, well.
And, you know, you can always say calf rope, we couldn't do any better, and turn it over to them five years from now if you're not successful in five years in getting any funding. So you're a professional. I don't know where the feedback's coming. You got something in your pocket? Where's your cellphone?
Cellphone's here. Don't need to throw it?
Nah, I know. Traffic engineer, do you think this project would help, or, and is it gonna be included in your, is it gonna be included in your study?
I do have that listed in my scope of work, of looking at Highway 80 and the interchange and quantifying the impacts of widening Highway 80, providing dual-left turn lanes at the interchange to show what impact that would have on delays. So that is something that I have included. Yes, sir.
Okay. And how long's it gonna take for you to finish your study, you think? A year? I mean, be honest.
It's not gonna take a year. It would probably be in January at the latest, before I had that finished.
Okay, all right. Yeah, sure. Well, yeah, you don't wanna do it, we'll pull it. So, that's fine. You know, we're just, for now, we're gonna say the board's not comfortable in trying to improve traffic in downtown.
That's not what we're saying.
Let's say the board has more questions.
Okay, well, that's fine, that's what Jonathan's gonna do.
I'm good, yes, I'm good with Jonathan studying that, but us pulling this is not saying that we're not interested in solving traffic. I think we just wanna get more information before we start committing to doing something like that. So Jonathan, as long as that is gonna be part of yours, that's great. Thank you.
And I will try to do it faster than that. I'll do it as fast as I can.
Sure. All right. So we're gonna strike number two. All right. What about number three? What about number four?
Number three, I have a question, and Mike, Jonathan could maybe help out with that, as far as the roundabout, right? Did, didn't, I know you did a rough kind of estimate on looking at, looking at another roundabout and it taking about that space. Would you agree with that?
That was something the mayor had done. There, there are other options as far as mini roundabouts that are not necessarily as large, depending on what type of volumes you're dealing with.
Okay.
And speeds and that kind of thing.
That perfectly answers that question. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Which is number three in the study. So he'll, he'll finish that as well. So we'll have that in January. Okay?
Mayor, on the planning commission, I can bring you an ordinance at the next meeting for everybody to look at, based on what you've told me.
Sure.
Okay, so I'll just have that. I don't have it ready now, but I'll take the current and I'll make amendments and get it out to y'all before the next meeting, and you can look at it.
Okay.
That means we pull them before?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna strike them before until it's.
Because I don't have it ready for. And you mentioned seven, but it'd be eight, right? Because we got it.
Seven, seven. You need, you're gonna work with each one of them.
He gets to pick one that I don't. All the, all the men do, not the women. He gets to choose one.
I'm not kidding. Okay. All right, I thought I miscounted.
No.
All right.
I have an odd number because of both.
So, all right, so we're at number five. Anybody have problems with number five? Number six? Number seven?
My only question about number seven is, if we're at 67.7% of capacity right now and we're at putting one, adding another one right here.
That was two years ago.
Okay, so where are we?
Well, we're at 90%. No, 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 that's back when we started pulling. So I believe we're probably somewhere around 72% to 75%. And we need to do, we'll get some testing done on our wells, I'll be able to tell you exactly. But from Marty Herndon, whoever, Marty Herndon, when you get done with one, you start another. And we need to start another.
So we're, we're testing multiple sites for one?
No, we're testing for the next wells. In other words, you're trying to line them up and say, we've already got it picked, when we need another one, we know where to go with it. That make? No, 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 no. We wanna do one well right now, SRF loan at Star Brandon Road. But we wanna test other sites to see what viable places we have.
Okay. Mayor, may I just ask?
Sure.
All you're asking is for the boards, I mean, we still, we don't have a contract or anything like that, that'll all come later, right?
That's what Matthew will generate then.
Okay, I was just trying to make sure we're, where we're.
I just don't wanna spend money with an engineer to come up with a contract or something that we pay him for that the board is unaware of coming.
I got you, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. All right, number eight. I think y'all good with that one? Number nine, what about travel to Tupelo? Everybody good with that one? Okay. Number 10, consideration to develop bid documents following projects. Now, this is, this is, again, a big one. How much money are you gonna put into it? You don't know until you get the bid documents and you put it out for bid. Then you decide, yeah, I'm gonna go forward with that one, or no, I don't. You can't advertise for bids on what something might cost.
I guess my, I'm thinking here of maybe we need to prioritize, maybe we need to have a meeting and prioritize these projects. How about that? Regardless, really, of cost, to some degree. I mean, maybe cost plays a factor, but which ones needed first?
Well, I'm 100% sure the Police Department needs that one, I'm 100% sure the Fire needs that one. So then you're prioritizing parks. So.
Do you have to get bid documents?
Well, to get bid document, you've gotta pay somebody to generate the plans. You know, you don't know until you do it.
What are we looking at as far as just potential ballpark costs of getting bid documents for everything?
Hmm, that's a great question. Good question. Don't know, the two we would use would be Werborn or Allen, Jamie Ware, and Chris Trubisky, he's been kind of our parks guy to help, he generated what we needed for Quarry Park and the improvements, which is Neil Schaefer, and for Shallow Park. So he was instrumental in that. So that's who I'd go to, is those two, to begin those processes. Would you like me to get proposals from them to do that exact thing for the next board meeting, so you know what that cost would be? Okay, all right. I'm liking that. All right, so we're gonna save number 11 for last. Yes, sir. Yes, sir?
Y'all follow number 10?
Pardon me?
Number 10.
What about?
Y'all don't have discussing it, correct?
I'm sorry, we can't hear. Well, they said, number one, it's not a public hearing either.
But y'all are discussing, I'd love to say something on it if you allow.
Well, no, just, we'll get, we'll get, we'll handle that and stay in touch and come back. Okay? All right. So we're gonna strike two, we're gonna strike four, and we're gonna strike, is that it? Yeah, we're gonna do one. Marcus, what do you charge for a full-page cover, color ad in the paper? Not to exceed 13. Okay, got that one? I'll pay whatever's above 13. All right. So number three, yeah, action on three, action on five, six, seven, action on eight and nine.
This mode of advertising is in the best interest of the citizenry. So that's part of the 1,300 expenditure there.
What'd you say, Marcus? 13, not to exceed 13. Got it. Thank you. All right, so one, three, five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Can we do a separate action on one, Mayor?
Separate action on one, Mr. Baker, then. Most to approve by Mr. Lou Coker, second by Mr. Jerry Crane. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Harry. Thank you, board. All right, so now we're doing three, five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Yes, Mayor, and I haven't seen the, it may be in here, I just, is the professional services agreement with Kaiser in here? Do we have the agreement?
Yes. Keep saying aye.
I'm sure I missed it.
Right on. It's here.
Okay.
What actually? It's standard. You proved the last one. He did one just a few months ago.
Okay. I got it, Mayor. Thank you.
You got it now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, board. Thank you for your patience. On those listed, is there a motion to approve those? As numbered. Motion by Mr. Chris Benson.
Say.
Second by Mr. Jerry Crane. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Harry. All right. Now, we're moving to number 11, which is a public hearing on a moratorium conversation. All right, Mr. Baker, you got the mic.
This is a public hearing with regard to a resolution that was previously adopted by the mayor and board of Alderman with regard to the matter of the adoption of, the potential adoption of an ordinance of the city imposing a comprehensive temporary moratorium of the approval of preliminary plats for any residential subdivision in any R12, R8, RM8, RM4, RH, MH, or TND zoning district in the city. Who do you want me to ask? The director of community development about the prerequisites and where the notice was put in the paper?
Sure.
Ms. Barnett, was the, this public hearing was noticed in the Rankin County News, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it was.
Was the matter of the public hearing and the subject of the resolution presented to the planning commission?
It was.
Did the planning commission adopt the resolution with regard to the proposed action of the board?
They didn't.
And what was the planning commission's position with regard to the matter?
Recommend for.
To approve, to adopt?
To adopt the ordinance, yes.
Were there any conditions on the action of the planning commission? Qualification?
There was not. No, sir.
General description as provided with regard to the nature of the public hearing. Will ask for those in favor of or in opposition or desire to make any particular public comment with regard to the same to come forward and speak. First, asking for those in opposition. We can just take it from there and we can kind of add those up and then we can go from there. Joey, you may have some questions. I know the mayor is available for any questions. So if there's anyone here who desires to make any public comment in opposition to any proposed adoption of an ordinance imposing a comprehensive temporary moratorium as described, you more than welcome to come forward and speak.
I don't know if they understood. Does anyone that would like to speak?
Okay. I'll do it again. Does anyone here desires to speak in opposition to the, to the adoption of a proposed ordinance as described?
Yes, sir. My name is John Skelland. I'm here on the half of Grants Ferry Parkway LLC.
Come on up, John.
Good evening. We have an enlargement of a, kind of a map with some satellite imagery and some corridors drawn on it. If I can just bring it and have it before me while I speak. First of all, I appreciate the opportunity to be heard by the mayor and board tonight. I don't know what's going on with feedback. I hope I'm not contributing to it.
Me either. But I've got a tech guy sitting in the back of the room and I hope that he's taking note of the feedback.
I spend a lot of evenings in other municipality boardrooms and so it's always interesting to see everyone, how they handle business of the cities. And I certainly appreciate everybody here who serves as a public servant and I'm happy to be in front of my colleague, Mark Baker, who I sometimes call for assistance on some of the problems I got to deal with with some of the municipalities that I represent. He's always helpful. As I said, my client is Grants Ferry Parkway LLC. The manager is Mr. Thomas Cook, who's here behind me. I think many of you may know him personally or know of him. We do stand in opposition to the moratorium. Grants Ferry Parkway LLC, as many of you probably knows, has for a long time been planning a commercial development in the east side of town where there has essentially been what is in effect a public-private partnership on a number of levels over the years. Grants Ferry Parkway LLC does not, is not a residential developer. So they do not stand here today in opposition to the moratorium because they have plans for residential development. To the contrary, they are a commercial development. But I just wanted to go over briefly, and many of you, I'm sure, know this. I don't want to, I don't want to take up too much time of the board or the public who's in attendance tonight. But years ago, Grants Ferry Parkway LLC, along with BCS Development Company, were formed to purchase and develop about 420 acres of land near the East Brandon I-20 interchange. And I think you can see that. Earlier today, Mr. Cook submitted an affidavit. I think everyone on the board and the city clerk has been provided a copy of it filed with the city. And we would ask that his affidavit, along with the exhibits, be made a part of the record tonight. And I've got a copy here if I need to provide an additional copy. But again, just briefly to cover some of the background, and I will try to be brief. Even though not all of the property was within the city of Brandon, GFP, Grants Ferry Parkway, requested that the city of Brandon annex the part of the property that's not in there, and Brandon did so. Then GFP requested certain rezoneings for part of the property, and Brandon did so. GFP proposed and built the Grants Ferry Parkway from Highway 80 to 471, including widening part of Highway 80. And GFP requested that the city and the county approve a tax increment financing plan, which both Rankin County and the city did, and then later restated them. And then GFP, together with BCS Development Company, entered into a development agreement to provide infrastructure improvements to be planned, built, and paid for by BCS, later to be reimbursed through the issuance of tax increment financing bonds. And the expected development expressly referenced in these agreements contemplates more than 1 million square feet of commercial development. Total estimated cost of installation of infrastructure, $25 million. Since that time, the city has drilled a water well on land that was donated by GFP. The city has installed gravity sewer lines to the residential area. Cooperative Energy acquired land for and built certain electricity transmission lines for the property of the area. CenterPoint Energy installed a natural gas line to serve the property. And then Rankin County and Brandon entered into an interlocal agreement in 2023. I think it was approved by the attorney general's office last year for the I-20 connector loop. And there's a plat of that that I also have. I don't think it's a part of the affidavit that I'm going to ask to be made a copy of the record. It would be better if I just hand you the documents once I'm through talking. So many of you probably know all that, but the point of it is just to essentially say, for a long time coming, there's been a very healthy partnership between my client, the city of Brandon, and Rankin County, public-private partnership to construct and anticipate commercial development, which of course is going to be dependent on residential development in the east part of town. And my client has spent a lot of money in partnership with the city and the county in anticipating residential development and trying to encourage that residential development. One thing that was remarkable to me, listening to the mayor talk and listening to what you spoke about before I got up here, was how much growth the city of Brandon seems to be enjoying right now. And I think that's always the goal of a city, is responsible development. You know, you want to increase, you want to have a kind of city where people want to come live and people want to build businesses and people want to send their schools to. And clearly, that's what Brandon is doing. I think I saw 62% increase on one of the exhibits before we got up here in population over the last 25 years. And I certainly think Brandon should be applauded for that. And that's one reason why Grants Ferry Parkway LLC stands in opposition to a comprehensive moratorium. We certainly understand and support the city wanting to be careful about the way residential development occurs. I certainly, having the opportunity to work for other cities, understand that. But what we understand as proposed is essentially a comprehensive moratorium. We are not yet sure what the duration would be. We do know that the last moratorium that's partially a subject of tonight's action was enacted in 2023 against build-to-rent. And we respectfully submit that the city should not adopt a comprehensive moratorium on all residential improvement, if we understand correctly that that's what the board is considering tonight. Not only because we feel like it halts the development of all of these millions of dollars that have been spent, all of these efforts that have been spent between the county and the city, and in efforts and coordination with GFP, but also because it seems to sort of stifle the growth that the city of Brandon seems to be enjoying right now and the development that seems to be occurring, that people want to come live here and work here. Of course, I heard about a data center and I'm sure that's going to, you know, be just one of many developments. And it sounds like to me there's a lot of other need for residential development. So while we support responsible development, we would oppose a comprehensive moratorium because we don't want the city of Brandon to enter into anything that would effectively not only deprive the owners and the developers of the use of their property, especially as zoned, but also halt in its tracks all of the efforts and all of the money that has been spent together through that partnership and through those efforts. I do have Mr. Cook here who's present. If the board wants to hear from him, he's, the boot's on the ground and can tell you more about the facts. But as I say, I know the time is short. I appreciate being heard. I have a number of documents that I'd like to submit to the city clerk to be made a part of the record, including the interlocal that I referenced. And I have some extra copies as well, if the board would like these that are not included in the affidavit. Just, board, bear with me one minute. Make sure I get my paperwork handed off correctly here. And I guess, just one more point to make sure if it's not clear on the enlargement in front of me.
Obviously, the areas that my client's concerned about with the recent whole, the residential development, along these areas where the infrastructure, the transit, the transition lines, or the construction of the road.
Has happened in partnership, as previously mentioned. And I know there's a lot of other people that need to talk and you'll have a lot of other business to take care of. Unless you want to hear from Mr. Cook or have anything further from me, I'll sit down and I thank you for the opportunity to be heard.
I do have one question for you. Along that northern end of the Grants Ferry Parkway, I guess I'm confused. I'm looking at some of these documents and exhibits. The roadway that goes from Tricam Bridge to 471 there, is that fully completed now or is there another, two lanes going in there? Yep, right there. No, I'm talking about from 471? Yes, it goes by Cornerstone all the way down to Tricam Bridge Road. Is that fully completed right now or is there another set of roadways going through there?
We have a wider way of four lanes. We built two lanes. That's all we've been able to build on that section. Only the park. The other two lanes have been set here. We committed, again, our government, to build two lanes from 471 to Tricam Bridge and build Phase A, which we built. And then we built this section, which was section, and did it up before.
That would be the four lanes, the other two are not. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who desires to make comments in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Is anyone here?
I'm objecting to do it the last time. Do I need to object and say everything again or just?
I got you. I got you down right back. Is there anyone else here who desires to make comments regarding this?
Thank you so much. Been a while since I've been to a city board meeting, but I've enjoyed it. I'm so proud of the city of Brandon, its growth and the amenities that it offers and continues to bring in. And people all over the state are talking about the city of Brandon. But I was not really prepared to come. I just heard about this moratorium proposed just recently, as recently as this morning. I heard that the board may vote on it. So as you know, I'm Freddie Harrell, for those that may not know me, but we, and my family, Ruby Walsh and Reverend Gaden Harrell are here with the same interests, so I speak for them as well tonight. But not knowing exactly what this means, but having gained a good bit of knowledge tonight about what it means, as most of y'all know, we have been negotiating a purchase of some family land that we've had for our retirement, with the city being involved for almost two years, in one way or another. And I wanted to say that if this moratorium goes into effect, it's a likelihood that that's going to shut that development, proposed development down, and therefore the sale of this property. As the city is aware, and I know the attorney is aware for the city, that we've been working closely with Horton, and I think the city has too, and I think very successfully. And so to hear this at this last minute is pretty shocking that that's going to shut this development down likely as well. So as a gentleman just spoke, when you shut down residential development, you're going to shut down commercial development. It takes people to warrant, an investor to come in with commercial, nice hotels, nice commercial developments. And without continuing development, the city will stagnate. As some of you know, there's been no growth at Brandon High School in the last five years. I've expressed that to some of you, but maybe not all of you. And I'm here this evening, not really prepared to address the details of what I guess you're doing, but I would ask for a delay in the vote, if possible. If you would consider the delay for a couple of weeks and allow us to think about it, get better informed about it, and see the city side of it a little better, I think it would be a great benefit to our family. I thank you for allowing me this time.
My name is Wayman Tigret. We've been in Brandon since 1946. And like Butch mentioned earlier today, he and I sell in the planning commission board for 2001 for many years. And I was on that board many, many years and helped volunteer to do, hopefully, a good job for the city of Brandon. And I stand with Ronnie Garner and the Harrell family. I represent my son, who has just, we don't have a 400-acre plot in the big acres like they do. We just have a small 18 acres on Lewis Wilson that have been working for a year and a half, has submitted plans or okay by the planning commission, and it's stagnant. And I would just submit to the board to please take in consideration, and I don't know the details of why the moratorium is in effect, but it sure would help the city of Brandon. Like when I grew up in the 50s and 60s, graduated Brandon High School, there were 1,200 people in the city of Brandon. 30 people in my class of 1960. in the city of Brandon, 30 people in my class of 1963. Now there are probably 400, 400 people in the senior class. That's how much the city has grown. For the city to continue to grow, to prosper, as it has done, I think it'd be just great if we could just, you know, have the opportunity to present places for these people to live. Because people want to move to Brandon, to Rankin County. I've had my business here since 1969. I finished pharmacy school, still there. I'm not, I retired because I have to be 72. I retired, I got old, but we have seen it grow from nothing. We have five full-time pharmacists there now, and we're right in the middle of Brandon. Been there 57 years. One of the oldest businesses in Brandon, beside maybe the Rankin County Hues and the Rankin County Co-op that moved outside the city limits of Brandon. And just want to say that we hope that Brandon can continue to grow, continue to prosper. And it's been great. I can't think of a better place to live than Brandon, Mississippi. It's been a great place, great education, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Mark. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition?
Yeah, I want it.
My name's Will Miller. I'm not going to be nearly as eloquent as Mr. Scanlon, but I've got a little bit of background in real estate law. And I've looked over this resolution, did a little research on what this does as far as investment-backed expectations. This gentleman right here brought up a case in point. I've looked over the resolution and how it's written, and I would not recommend this being passed. It looks like you've got, across the board, nearly a conclusive prohibition on residential uses. And I understand the reasoning, I understand the stated logic in here, that you've got the concern that there could be a detrimental impact on city services, water, sewer, and things like that. But if that were the case, this wouldn't be just residential, it would include commercial. So I think this, the way this is written, would set up for an argument, far enough, for an equal protection violation, which is not good. You previously had a temporary, very narrow, moratorium for rental uses. Historic case law gives you that. But when you come in here and you set this out as broad as this is, case law is not good for you. It's Supreme Court case law, whether it's Lucas v. Coastal Carolina, Loretta would be a teleprompter, or the Penn Central case in New York. This moratorium is too broad, the way it's written. There are certain specific uses that benefit the city of Brandon that don't need to be shut down. There's a provision in here that any pending applications that have been submitted previously are going to be tabled. So arguably, a deprocess violation in that. I understand the city's intent of what you're trying to do, and the city has done some things they want with a comprehensive plan for zoning. I know, understand the changes you want to do on the T and D zoning. I think the city's right. T and D zoning is typically done on an overlay district, not as a separate zoning issue. But I think there's a happy medium that you can find without an across-the-board prohibition on residential uses. When you say that we can do commercial, but we can't do residential because of limitation on our capacity and services, that argument just doesn't, won't hold water. So I hope the city will reconsider enacting this ordinance without going in there and looking at some of the constitutional issues that come out there by eliminating investment-backed expectations, like this gentleman was talking about with sale of his family property. A lot of Supreme Court law on that, it's very, very, very clear. And it carries a lot of gravity on those violations. Thank you.
You didn't ask if anybody was in favor? Mark this down. Okay, see none? All right, public hearing's closed. All right, board, it's time to talk. So what's the will of the board?
I think we've talked to our planning people, addressing Mr. Miller's issues about commercial versus residential. We're talking about Mr. Harrell's property here as a proposed 900 and something homes on a two-lane road. You're talking about 3,000 cars a day. That's got to be addressed. Mr. Tigret, you've lived on the corner of Busequell and Sunset all your life. There's 500 homes down Busequell. That's another 1,500 cars coming up Busequell. It's those kind of things. It's not about, you know, and we've got water and drainage issues everywhere. I mean, from what I understand, the zoning part of it could be finished within, what'd they say, 30 days?
Well, target is first board meeting in November, but more likely the second one, or at least by the first board meeting in December.
So, and back to Mr. Miller's thing, he's talking about the T and D. We don't even know what the zoning categories are that we're going to be looking at right now. So, I mean, for residential, I don't know. I just, I mean, I personally think if we can fast-track it, I don't want to do a moratorium, but if we can fast-track it, I'm for it. We talked about the growth being stagnant, but I think it's very important to get it right. If it takes 30 or 60 days, I think it's a lot more important to take that 30 or 60 days than to look up 10 years from now, 20 years from now, and not be able to move through town.
And I agree.
That's my opinion.
We've discussed this before. We don't want to do this, but it's something that we feel like we need to do. It's in the best interest of all the citizens. A lot of it is because of the stormwater issues that we have been having. For those of you that have been watching online or have been here in the meetings, or you've experienced these stormwater issues, we've got to get this corrected. And we've talked to the engineers, we've talked to those that are doing the planning. And as he said, we're looking at possibly 30 to 60 days. It's not like it's five years. We're not trying to just completely halt everything. Brandon is a great place to live, and we want it to continue to be that. But we've also got to get a handle on some things so we're not constantly doing reactive. We've got to be a little bit more proactive so things are done correct, as Chris said.
So if it's only going to take 30 to 60 days, why even do this? Why have this moratorium if it's only going to take 30 or 60 days and we can figure it out?
I asked Mr. Baker two weeks ago if we could just put a pause on everything until we got it figured out, without doing a moratorium. And he said, "That's a moratorium."
I mean, it effectively is. I mean, a pause is a moratorium. I mean, there are other ways. I mean, you could do development agreements with your subdivisions if you wanted to. You could do some other things like that. They effectively would be an agreement where you say, "You do what we say," and you can move forward, which would try to mitigate some of the issues that you're doing in planning. But effectively, yes, to pause is a moratorium.
Okay, so could we just do a pause?
Well, that's a moratorium, that's what you do.
Okay.
I mean, I think there's a lot of things. David and I looked at almost every one of those subdivisions last week. And there's some places in there where there were, how many, David? Eight houses in a row that looked exactly alike. I'd like to change those things, but that has nothing to do with this moratorium. We can fix those things. Big development going out? I think we all agree that we need to look out off of Star Road. To me, that kind of needs a moratorium, until we figure out the infrastructure needs and the water, all that stuff. But just to, but to pin the Cooks down and the Harrells down.
But the Harrells are Star Road.
Well, I just, I don't know how to fix it.
It was mentioned that this resolution may be a bit broad, and I would agree with that. I think it's open-ended, I think it's, but at that time, when we did it, it served its purpose. But I think now, while no one wants to say we're not doing business in Brandon, there is a need for some type of pause now. But that pause should be backed up and supported, in my estimation, with, we need to do A, B, and C, whatever that is, infrastructure, water, sewer, whatever, and we have a timeframe that we can get that done. And I don't know, Mr. Baker just touched on it, and out of my league, really. But is there any kind of agreement-based approach for something like this?
Well, you could. I mean, you could, however, understand the agreement would be, so the out on the, on the build-to-rent ordinance, I mean, excuse me, on the moratorium on build-to-rent was, adopt covenants that get us to the point for our planning purposes. These covenants, we require you to have to, as an exception to that moratorium, right? Okay, so that's, that moratorium's addressed. The scope of your temporary moratorium in this place is complete planning. You're looking at stormwater, you're looking at density, you're looking at traffic, you're looking at a lot of things. You're looking at, you're looking at infrastructure needs, you're looking at all that. And so you could come up with an out that said, if you enter into an agreement that mitigates these issues or addresses our concerns during this planning process, we'll let you move forward with preliminary plan. Understand, the developer's not going to like that because it's kind of a broad thing. It's like, well, we don't know what that means. And you don't either, because each development stands on its own, right? And so you'll have to come up with that, and they'll present a proposal to you. And if you approve that, then they'll move forward under that development agreement. That's effectively how that would happen. I'm not saying that would satisfy anybody, but I'm just saying that's something that you could consider.
Time for the board to talk. That answer your question?
Yes.
Jeremy?
It sounds like we have some issues to cover before, so we can figure out how to go forward, I think.
Sharon?
Do we have anything from Hayden on what their timeframe is? Wasn't Hayden, what is it, Wagner, that was looking at?
Yeah, they're doing a county-wide stormwater, and they targeted four areas in Brandon. I had them come two board meetings back, and four of the areas have been pretty much done. But they're supposed to be done with Brandon's in January. In fact, we did an $80,000, $90,000 contract with them to finish that, but that's January. And they presented what they had to date. What else? Lou? Chris? All right. Well, Lou asked me what I thought, you know, that's a great question. I'm wondering why you can't do individual things if you've got a piece of property that requires, that's known to require stormwater problems, and you require an engineering report of how you're going to alleviate that before you move forward. If you're going to require a traffic study, we've done that before, even though we don't like it, what it gives us sometimes. And I think you're about to do away with T and D and change the zoning. I've got great confidence in Gray, Hoots is doing that. In fact, there's a planning session that you can go to this Friday morning, if I'm not mistaken. If the board or anybody in the public would like to go to there, I think it's for elected officials to go to. But you could reach out there, even though we haven't, how that process works on the zoning, it's got to be publicized in the paper for two weeks. Then we have to have a public hearing on the zoning, take any action on that. Board votes on it, that is the new zoning map. So out of the least of this audience, we've gone through three community development directors in three years, and it's left us kind of hamstrung. I think we've got a great young man here now and a great mind that's going to help straighten these troubled waters out. But I also think, as far as zoning is concerned, we already know kind of what we want. We already know what the boundaries are, the lot sizes, and all these type of things. And if a developer comes to us and says, "We're going to build to that," then that ought to supersede, and there shouldn't be a moratorium to slow that down. So, you know, that's kind of how I see it. So, any other comments, questions, or board?
What's a feasible approximate timeline for new zoning to come out? New zoning map?
Our target, when we sat down, Joey and I sat down with Gray, and the target is first board meeting in November, which is November the 2nd. Now, whether or not we make that target is another, you know. We're not trying to hurry up and twist things and force things through that aren't articulated and done in the proper way. That's why I say, so November, the second board meeting in November, and I feel fairly strong by the end, by December, first board meeting then, it ought to be done. But it may be done November 2nd. But I, you know, beyond my scope of control.
60, 90 days, probably, max.
The target, when we sat down, was, that she agreed to, was November 2nd. Joey, you remember anything other than that? And the audience, the board, I think we found where the feedback is coming from. We need to get rid of this battery, ah, see, it's that microphone. So we need to get another battery, that one's got AA batteries in it. So that's the one we'll use. So if you would, just carry it over to the other podium.
Can we bring it over there?
Yeah, we'll, we'll. All right, so at least we just go solve that problem tonight.
Is that better?
More better.
All right, more better. Yeah, that was, that's the expectation, to have something, a deliverable to the board, to present to the board at the first board meeting in November. Of course, I would assume that you guys approve, right? The board approves of what has been presented. So as Butch mentioned, we also have public hearing requirements.
Yeah.
Just going to push it further.
Back to square one, though. The board has to have something to vote on before we advertise.
Yes, sir.
Ballot?
So that's a timeline to add, right?
So could you check with Gray in the morning to see where we are on that? I know that several meetings that were had here with several board members and that type thing, and see where we are on that document. And Bob Barber's there to help you in any regard in that aspect.
Yes, sir. It is in Community Development's court right now to provide revisions back for her comments that she did. So it's in my court for now.
Oh, it's in your court?
Yes, sir.
So you're going to stay?
I got to protect Gray in this one, yeah, it's me.
Okay.
But Bob Barber and I, which he's on the agenda for that agreement, hopefully, the board would consider approved to be an expert for me to bounce information off on, to catch up quickly, so.
Reason why I ask, you can give the board feedback this week as to status, to see if that November date is a good date.
Yes, sir, that's fair. I'll give a report.
Okay, thank you. Don't break it.
I did?
General, don't break it. All right, board, serious topic. What's the will of the board? You don't put that back out there. That's right. You broke it, you keep it.
I mean, do you want to table any decision?
I would recommend table it until you hear back from Gray. I really think on the zoning aspect of it, you're about to have it.
Right.
I agree, I think we should table it until we hear back.
Next board meeting, two weeks.
May I have some clarity, just for our department? If we're tabling it, the temporary stay is still in effect, correct?
Correct.
It just kind of extends it to, okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
All right. No, till the second board meeting in October, two weeks from tonight. Twenty. Okay?
And Joey, based on what you have, I mean, are you ahead of schedule, on schedule? Okay. Okay.
All right, I know the audience couldn't hear you, for the presentation to the board as to what the new zoning map will look like. You feel good? Pardon? You and Bob will have that in two weeks. That's good. That's good. I understand. That's good. That's good. I've already caught him here, working on weekends in the middle of the night, so he'll put the midnight oil in to get it done, board. I have confidence in that. All right, board? David? David, you good? No? Well, I'm waiting, I'm just back checking again. Okay, all right, so we're going to have a motion by who? We'll entertain a motion to table this until October the 20th. At such time, we anticipate a new zoning map will be put forward to the city for board approval. Got a motion by Mr. Chris Benson?
Second.
Second by Sharon Jarrett. Both, all of them, all of them. I know Sharon, ladies. All right, any further discussion? Audience, thank you for your patience tonight. We're still not through, as you can see. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Harry. Appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to table that until October 20th. Mark, are you good? All right, we're going to give the room a moment to clear out for those... I thought you wanted to stay. Thought y'all cared about Brandon. All right, Mary Ann, you just got to wait a minute.
Okay.
We'll let the room clear. We've got two, three board members out. Back, Courtney. So we're going to bring that back to the board, some kind of what it's going to cost to develop the plans next board meeting for all the parks and for the police station and fire stations. So that'll be a topic then. I'll give you a chance to talk about it then. But you saw the list. Was there something else we missed, that I missed in that?
I wouldn't.
Everybody's out of the room, and we're still being live streamed. I just want you to know that, but we're taking pause here. So keep us on live stream, but if you want to stand up and speak real quick to the three board members left in here, please.
I was just saying, we live in...
Three.
And also, of course, Texas, Tennessee, Louisiana, Georgia, Alabama. There are people who talk about our rebuild outside of this area. And they might talk about Florida, but they don't talk about the Skylopes that much. It's going to be, there's a reason we have to bring in bigger things coming to play on the Skylopes, on the bigger earth, because it is dangerous sometimes. Before y'all do any designs, before y'all do any things, I would honestly give it a go. I'd get with Kate Belton, who's built the USA Football Hall, and honestly brought more softball teams than more than you can possibly imagine here before you go into the body and start everything.
I'll set that up. I'll set up that meeting next, probably, week. Courtney? Okay? Get with Jennifer. Jennifer's out of town, but I'll set up a meeting with... And you see, now, the sad part about that is, I can't really ask an engineer to come spend a day with us without being compensated, you see? You see, that's where you get into the planning portion of it. So, you know, people don't work, you know, people will work for free, but, I mean, you pay for what you get, and you get what you pay for. Kind of school I was brought up in. That make sense? But I will ask. All right, so we're back in here. Huh? No, Mary Ann's the only one. We'll start with the clerk in just a minute. Pardon? Oh, and look, you wait, you wait till you get through this executive session and ask me that. Yeah. I know. It might help, though, is there no one in the hallway? Is there anyone in the hallway? You could open both of those doors and let, get a little air exchange. Pardon? Well, run them all, run them down the hallway, then. Run them down, just open both, lock both doors open, so we get some air exchange in here. Look, he doesn't know how. Bo, could you help him open those doors? All right, here we go, Mary Ann. I'll try to get some other air in here.
Can I take them all together?
If, you read them all, and if someone has a problem, we'll back up to it.
Okay.
And strike it if necessary. Board, you know, I don't know the last time we ever had a six-page agenda. All right, Mary Ann, go ahead. If you would, tell them to... All right, here we go, Mary Ann.
Number one.
There you go. Pull that microphone down a little bit, please. All right, there you go.
Consideration to approve professional services agreements for the purposes of promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill 1521 and other law for and related purposes. Authorize the mayor to execute the same and approve payment of all show-related expenditures. The first one, Legend Bound Touring, Inc., FSO Armani White and the City of Brandon Artist Agreement, Maddox Batson LLC and the City of Brandon Artist Agreement, Zach Top, Live Nation Sell-Off Agreement, Charlie Wilson, Live Nation Sell-Off Agreement. Number two, consideration to approve as the lowest and best quote from A1 Kendrick Fence Company to replace 230 linear feet of eight-foot-high dog ear cedar fence in the amount of 7424.40. Another quote was received from Gomez Fence Company in the amount of 9738. Number three, consideration to request permission to advertise to replace the Library HVAC Chiller pursuant to the attached memo from the city clerk's office. The item is budgeted. Number four, consideration to approve an agreement with TechSource Solutions for IT services and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Number five, consideration to adopt a new debt set-off agreement by changing the name of the City of Brandon's Debt Coordinator for the Municipal Intercept Company LLC and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement to collect municipal debt. Number six, consideration to accept correspondence from the Mississippi Department of Wildlife, Fisheries, and Parks notifying the City of Brandon denying the city's request for funding and the Recreation Trails Program for fiscal year 2025. The correspondence will be placed on file and are permanent minutes for the City of Brandon, Mississippi. Number seven, consideration to accept the PFAS testing results from Stag Louisa LLC, a legal firm in New Orleans, Louisiana. The correspondence will be placed on file and are permanent minutes for the City of Brandon, Mississippi. Number eight, request permission to hold a flu shot clinic for city personnel on Wednesday, October 15th, 2025, from 7:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m., finding that this benefit is critical to ensuring adequate staffing during the cold and flu season, which is a direct benefit to the citizenry and results in overall savings to the city from the standpoint of lost time from work. Number nine, consideration to accept the municipal compliance questionnaire for fiscal year 2025 and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the same. Number 10, request permission to hire Stephanie Pickle as accounts payable specialist effective October 7th, 2025, and set the rate of her pay in accordance with the memo. Number 11, request permission to hire G.R. Keys and Cortland Young as runners for the amphitheater effective October 7th, 2025, and set the rate of her pay in accordance with the memo. Number 12, consideration to approve the docket of claims for October 6th, 2025, Fox Everett Claims released on October 2nd, 2025, the electronic fund transfers for September of 2025. And the last one, number 13, monthly report of purchase license.
All right, so we have 12 items from the clerk. Does anyone have comment or question on those? Tell you, number one, of course, for the amp. Number two was a fence at the Shallow Park Office where there were some dead pine trees that had to come down, so we had to mash a fence there. That's by Mr. J.W. Beck's house. The rest of those are pretty standard. So is there a motion to approve those 12 items from city clerk? Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack, second one, Mr. Jared Crane. Any further comment or question? All in favor, say aye.
Thank you, Harry.
All right, on to Mr. Alex Wade. Alex, I think you've got one item you told me about. Did we have a question?
Yes, I'll cover that. Good evening, Mayor, Board. I'd like to take one through five together. Number six, I'd like to remove from consideration. There's some issues we need to investigate before bringing them back, before the board...
What about the remainder, seven through 12?
Yeah, seven through 12, I'd like to take together.
All right, so we're, board, we're going to strike number... And then do them all, okay? Got an electrical certification problem on number six that we need to study. You good, Mr. Baker? All right, Alex, look, when you're going through these, you don't have to read one through six. Just read, you know, one, and we can look at one through six. If a board member has a question on something specific in their ward, they'll say something to you.
Perfect.
So just go ahead.
Okay. One, consideration to approve the following invoices from Hemp Hill Construction Company for non-emergency repairs and authorize payment of the same. Number two, consideration to approve the following from ERS Incorporated for the Richland Creek Stone Bridge NRCSEWP ditch project. These items are the final documentation to close out this project. Number three, consideration to approve the following from AdCamp for the 2024 Street Overlay Project. Number four, consideration to approve the following invoices from Hemp Hill Construction for emergency repairs and authorize payment of the same. All invoices were listed in FY25 and rendered. FY25 are under the general contract services commodity pricing. Number five, consideration to approve the following regarding the emergency storm pipe repair and replacement in downtown Brandon near 203 East Government Street. That's North Black Street and Tamburline Street. Number seven, consideration to approve a professional service agreement with Ashley Transport LLC, Ashley Farms and Trucking LLC for wood waste grinding services. Consideration, number eight, consideration for the following regarding the utility damage reimbursement payment received from Devini Construction, a subcontractor for AT&amp;T. We received payment from Devini for responsibility for damages. We intend to go after all subcontractors for damage responsibility to our utilities. This is a big win for us. Consideration to approve utility adjustment approvals and denials pursuant to the memo. That's number nine. Number 10, consideration to approve the following from Hemp Hill Construction Company for the Dining Point Dexter Parking Lot. These items will finalize that project. Number 11, consideration to approve the following from Hemp Hill Construction for the Highway 18, Dristel Boulevard Turn Lane Extension. That's the extension turn lane into Chick-fil-A and the other restaurants there. It's, they did that rapidly, in under 30 days, I believe. Number 12, consideration to approve as the lowest and best bid for the Kennedy Farm Parkway Multi-Use Path to Simmons Erosion and Control as recommended by the city's engineering firm, Benchmark Engineering Surveying LLC. Their recommendation memo is to accept the base bid, the alternate one, and the alternate three in the total amount listed.
Thank you, sir. Board, is there a motion to approve one through 12 minus number six? Mr. Baker has a question on one of them.
So the emergency, just want to make sure, number five, that was, the emergent, all of those invoices relate to that work, right?
Yes, that particular stormwater part.
So it's all one deal?
It's all one deal.
Got it. And then, and then, um... The change order, the reason for the, maybe I've got the number wrong. It's 11,085, is that right? Nine, number nine?
Number nine. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not sure what the extra decimals there, we got out into the thousands, but...
11,085 cents, is that what it is?
Yeah, it's 85 cents, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And is the, does the memo reflect why there's an increase?
Yes, there was an increase due to the final, I believe, aggregate quantities. There was some extra material that was required that wasn't originally projected accounted for.
And the bid for the Simmons, they are the lowest and best?
They are the lowest and best.
Okay, but lowest overall monetarily, correct?
Correct, for the base bid, alternate one and alternate three. There wasn't an additional one.
Just wanted to make sure, it didn't say. All right, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. I was real pleased with the sidewalk bid. Really thought it was going to be more than two times that, so very pleased with that. Glad it's working out. Good dry time of year. We actually needed that rain to settle that down a little bit more, so if you could, we need to talk about when they can get started.
Absolutely.
Please. All right, board, so one through 12 minus number six. Any further questions, board? Is there a motion to, motion from Mr. David Ferris? Who said that? Sharon Womack. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Harry. All right. All right, so don't break it.
It's the last one.
At least we found out where the feedback was coming from. Joe, push it in there some more. Push it in some more.
Push it, oh, I mean, it's in there tight.
Make it tighter.
Yes, sir.
You already broke one.
Can't find good help anymore, right, Mayor?
All right, go ahead, sir.
All right, I guess we need to take four by itself. Could we take one through three together?
Yes.
All right. Number one, consideration to approve a proposed contract with Orion Planning and Design, or Plus Design, to assist the city with updating the City of Brandon's own ordinance and authorize the mayor to execute the same. And number two, set a public hearing during the regular board meeting of October 20th, 2025, for consideration to rezone existing properties owned to R12 currently to NC 344 Highway 468. Consider, number three is consideration of approval for Joey Barnett, myself, and Randy Barnes to attend the Deep South Planning Commission hosted by Mississippi and Alabama chapters of the APA in Hattisburg, Mississippi during the dates of October 28th through the 30th.
Is there a motion to approve one through three? Motion by Mr. Lou Colker? Second by Mr. Jeremy King. Any question? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Harry.
All right, thank y'all. Number four, consideration of acceptance of a final plan for Hyde Park Phase Two in accordance with the memo.
You want to discuss it?
Yes.
About what's going on, anybody out in the world that might be listening?
Yeah, that's just a final plan so that the developer may subdivide and record it with the county with the conditions therein to satisfy Public Works' comments and concerns in addition to an approved and reviewed, or reviewed and approved LOC, including a warranty letter. So this approval will be conditional upon having all that satisfied. So, this approval will be conditional upon having all that satisfied. But it's so the developer can sell the lots for development or to get building permits to go vertical.
Okay. There a motion to approve?
Any question? How many lots are out there, Joey?
Uh, I didn't bring my paperwork in front of me.
I couldn't tell on them.
Do you have it handy, by chance?
I tried to count them, no, because I couldn't tell.
Mr. Edmonds here, do you know, you happen to know how many lots are out there, sir? In Phase Two? I got both the pros here. I can, if you don't have a handy.
While they're digging, awesome.
Mr. Edmonds said 74 lots, sir.
So, the conditions are the letter of credit and the warranty letter, is that right?
Uh, and also, there's a street light.
A street signage.
Street signage and streetlights too, yes. Okay, street signage for sure. There's a, something being worked, an agreement where those will be replaced to meet Brandon's specs.
Is there a letter for the minutes or something on that?
Yeah, it's in, it's in the memo.
Okay, I didn't, was it late come? I just come checking my stuff.
I believe it was late.
I just want to make sure there's one out there, I don't care.
What is the actual request, Mark? Sorry, I want to make sure I'm speaking correctly.
I'm not finding the letter, the condition letter that you referenced with regard to...
It's in, it's in that memo. That's, it was, it was the language within the memo, the conditions there.
I'm not seeing the memo.
Oh, okay.
I have the covenants, but I don't have a memo. So, subject to the conditions is set forth in your memo to the board of, uh, today? I mean, of Friday, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was a late submission. I have to, we've got to, we're going to work better together in the future. We spoke about it today.
I'm ready, man.
All right, thank you. So, all right, any further discussion, question? Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Chris Vincent? Second one, Ms. Sharon Womack. All in favor say aye? Thank you, Harry.
Thank y'all.
All right. Chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I've got three items. Can I take them together, please?
Please.
All right, number one, consideration to accept the resignation of Communication Officer Chantel Williams effective September 26th, 2025. Request permission to promote Sergeant Jerry Spelter to the rank of Deputy Chief effective October 7th, 2025, and set rate of pay according, according to the memo. And number three, request permission to hire Lafayette Martin II as patrolman for the City of Brandon Police Department and set rate of pay according to the memo effective October 7th, 2025.
Thank you, Chief. Is there a motion to approve?
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so, uh, what's the hierarchy now?
It'll be me, Bo, and then Jerry would be the number three.
Okay.
So, Jerry's going to take over a lot of the operations. We're splitting up operations between CID and the civilian side that we have, and then Patrol. So, Patrol really needs more hands-on leadership besides me and Bo and going in between. So, this actually helps us out a lot. And since Jerry's came on, he's brought his 20-plus years of leadership skills and ability, and he's made, he's made a big difference here the past year or so.
Agreed, or it wouldn't be on the agenda. All right, so, one, two, three. Is there a motion to approve those three? Grace the line, who said what? Sharon Womack? Jared Crane? All in favor say aye? All opposed, like sign?
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Harry, got it. And we'll swear him in in just a moment. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Item number one is request consideration to apply for the FY-26 EMS OF grant for $15,330 and authorize the mayor, finance director, and Carolyn Palmer, grant administrator, to execute all related documents. I gotta love getting free grant money. We always try to get every bit we can. And item number two is consideration to approve the professional service contract with Region 8 Mental Health Service Employee Assistance Program for the fire and police departments and authorize Chief Brian Robertson and Chief Joseph French to execute the same.
Thank you, Chief. And tomorrow when we meet, remind me to talk to you about storm sirens, please. Storm sirens.
Yes.
Remind me tomorrow to talk to you about them. All right, so, two items from the fire departments, is there a motion to approve those two items? Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack, second one, Mr. Chris Vincent. All in favor say aye? All opposed, like sign? Thank you, Harry. All right, board, like to determine, assess, retire to determine the necessity of being an executive session after we swear in as police officer? Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack? Second, Mr. David Ferris. All in favor say aye? All opposed, like sign? Thank you, board. Thought it might have been one or two there.
There were, uh, there were no votes taken in executive session.
All right, and we will adjourn until the twentieth, and we likely, Marcus, will have some work sessions between now and then.
I'll just adjourn until the twentieth.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.